Okay. Emma, I assume we can, I can begin?
Yep, we have people jumping on.
Okay, great. All right, this meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and you will notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 6, 2021. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on July 30, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on July 30, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. All right, then, Councilwoman Foster, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? That's why.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster?
Here.
Councilman George? Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Our attorney Schmier?
Here.
Our ministerator, Hope Bear.
Okay. Does anyone on the council have any agenda questions for this evening? Right, seeing none, we'll move on. At this point, I would like to ask Councilwoman Tara Canavera to introduce the folks who are here tonight with us from Women Aware. Tara?
Domestic violence affects individuals and families in every community, regardless of their age, economic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. Domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and in severe cases, even death. We, as neighbors and friends and family, need to be there to offer help and understanding. Yasi was one of those that the system failed. We all need to support her mother Karen in putting tougher laws that stop abusers from plea deals that do nothing to stop the abuse and violence. We also need to know about resources to help those being abused. And Women Aware is an amazing organization that can help us learn. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I just want to add, as the councilwoman mentioned, the loss of our Highland Park native, Yasmin Uyar, brought the scourge of domestic violence to the forefront of our collective consciousness here in Highland Park. We know, though, that they are not always visible to outsiders. Incidents of domestic violence are a sad and regular fact of life. There were 4,336 domestic violence offenses in Middlesex County in 2019, according to the New Jersey State Police reports. And Middlesex County had the third highest number of reported domestic violence assaults in New Jersey. Women Aware is headquartered in New Brunswick and is dedicated to promoting the safety and self-sufficiency of individuals and families affected by domestic violence in Middlesex County. Tonight, we are privileged to have Ms. Susan Dykman, Development Director for Women Aware Incorporated, the lead domestic violence service agency in Middlesex County. Her role is to establish and cultivate relationships with individuals, organizations, and foundations committed to helping survivors move beyond abuse. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Susan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for inviting Women Aware to present this evening and for this opportunity. Before I get started with my presentation, a number of thank yous for the partnership that Highland Park offers to Women Aware through the mayor, through the police department, and through borough officials for supporting our volunteer domestic violence response team, who are made up of members of the community. And I guess perhaps most importantly right now, for being open to learning more and working with Women Aware to educate the Highland Park community on the domestic violence services that are available to them. Going to share my screen. I guess start with what domestic violence is. It is a pattern of control and domination exerted by one person over another in a relationship. Coercion and control are manifested in a very broad range of intimidating, psychologically abusive, and physically abusive behaviors. And as Councilwoman mentioned before, domestic violence does not discriminate, regardless of sexual orientation, race, age, gender, socioeconomic level. Domestic violence touches every part of our society. Mayor Brill Mittler went through a couple of the statistics from Middlesex County, as reported by the New Jersey State Police. You also should know that in New Jersey, there is a domestic violence offense committed every eight minutes and 29 seconds. The 4,336 offenses reported in 2019 represents a 13% increase over domestic violence offenses in Middlesex County in 2018. And that overall, that represents 41% of the total number of reported criminal offenses. It's interesting that Middlesex County is the second most populous county in the state of New Jersey, and yet our residents report 27% more domestic violence incidents than Bergen, which is the most populous county. These statistics are important because they bring to the fore what a pervasive public health and safety issue domestic violence is. But it is important to know the stories of the victims and the survivors behind these statistics. So I'm going to take a few minutes and just share a story with you to give you an idea of the kind of an individual's journey through Women Aware. So Allegra came into our shelter just 15 days after giving birth to her second son. In the week after her child was born, Allegra was sexually assaulted by the abuser, the father of her children. Because of the assault, she was not able to go to her first postpartum checkup with the doctor. And she was deeply frightened because she didn't know if the pain she was experiencing was a result of giving birth or a result of the abuse. When she came into our shelter, Allegra's caseworker took immediate action to get her to the doctor for that postpartum exam. Because of COVID-19 restrictions, the caseworker was not able to accompany Allegra. However, she arranged for door-to-door transportation for Allegra from the shelter to the front door of the hospital. Our caseworker coordinated with the hospital healthcare provider, the security department, to have Allegra escorted from the door of the hospital to her appointment and back to the vehicle to ensure her safety. Allegra suffered from a variety of medical and dental needs resulting from the severe repeated physical abuse that she had endured. Our caseworker assisted Allegra in scheduling gynecologist, internist, and dentist appointments, and also coordinated with the Division of Child Protection and Permanency, also known as DCPNP, to provide funding for childcare so that Allegra could keep these appointments. Doctors determined that she had lost part of her ability to smell and suffered nerve damage near her eye as a result of the beating she endured. Allegra went in for successful same-day surgery to repair the damage, knowing that her children were safe and in good hands at the shelter. Allegra's struggles as a single mother worsened when her older son presented with motor skill and language delays. Our caseworker connected Allegra with Middlesex County's early intervention program, and she was able to get referrals for evaluations and services for her son. Women Aware also advocated with DCPNP to enroll Allegra in the Parents as Teachers Program to help her better understand her role in her children's development and to help her strengthen her parenting skills. Our caseworker worked with Allegra to find a local pediatrician to ensure that her sons receive ongoing healthcare and wellness services. It was a very happy and hopeful day for Allegra this past March, when she and her children safely relocated from the shelter into their own, their very own apartment. And Allegra shared with her caseworker, "Thank you for being available when I most needed someone to hear me, to help me find this strong person whom I did not even know existed after my experience." Women Aware could share another 2,000 of these stories every year. Allegra's is just one. Little bit of history to add to what the mayor shared about Women Aware. We were founded 40 years ago. We are still the only shelter for victims of domestic violence in Middlesex County. And our shelter, our safe house, continually operates at 100% capacity. Our mission is to improve the safety and self-sufficiency of individuals and families affected by domestic violence. All of our services are free. All of our services are confidential, and they are available to all persons. Our 24/7 hotline is the best point of access for those services. As you well know, Middlesex County is a diverse community. Our client services staff reflects that diversity. In fact, 80% of our team are bilingual. In terms of funding and how we provide the services that we do, Women Aware is very grateful for the federal, state, and county grants that we are awarded, the corporate and foundation grants, as well as the individual donations that come in and the revenue that comes from special events that we host from time to time. In terms of services, as I said, our 24/7 hotline is the best point of access. It is available 365 days a year, and there is always a person, an advocate, at the other end of the line. Our 732 number is 732-249-4504. We also offer a toll-free number, 833-249-4504. And just to give you an example, as you can see on the slide, we have over eight in-house languages on staff alone. And then our caseworkers and therapists also work with Language Line, which gives access to 200 more languages. So that when someone needs support, language is never a barrier. Certainly, it is more, it is easier to share an experience in the language that you are most comfortable in. So that should never, ever prohibit anyone from calling Women Aware. Our safe house, our emergency shelter, is in a confidential location, and it, as I said, operates at 100% capacity all of the time. It is a safe, welcoming haven for women and children who are fleeing abuse. We have 24 beds and five cribs. And we also have a child advocate on staff at the shelter to provide those, that unique support that the youngest survivors need. I do want to let you know that throughout the pandemic, both our 24/7 hotline and the emergency shelter remained open. And that was because our leadership is committed to cross-training client services staff so that even if you were not a normal staff member in the safe house or on the hotline, you were able to step in to make sure that those services remained available during a very, very difficult time for survivors and their families. In addition, Women Aware provides a pretty wide array of legal advocacy services. Our advocates provide information about legal rights and options. They provide support for filing restraining orders. They provide court accompaniment, and they provide preparation for a court appearance. Our advocates do not provide legal counsel. If a survivor requires that, we work very closely with Central Jersey Legal Services and Partners for Women in Justice to make sure that a survivor can get the legal counsel that they need. This is a little window inside our PALS program. PALS stands for Peace, a Learned Solution. And PEACE is our trauma reduction therapy program for children ages 3 through 12. It's a six-month program, and creative art therapists work with children using all kinds of modalities, art, music, play. We have an amazing sensory wall. Because for the littlest survivors, it can be very difficult, if not impossible, to articulate violence that they have experienced, that they have witnessed. So these are other avenues through which they can work through that process on the road to healing. Case managers and therapists also manage our support groups. Support groups meet weekly in English and Spanish. And Women Aware also offers parenting groups in English and Spanish. Women Aware was the first agency in the state to operate a permanent supportive housing facility. This facility offers three apartments, and usually the residents are families who are coming out of emergency shelter. There is a financial contribution that the families make, but it is a safe and affordable option when a mom is working to get back on her feet and to build a safer, healthier life for herself and her family. Last year, Women Aware started a new program. It's called Housing Navigation. And our coordinator of that program, our Housing Navigator, works with all victims of crime, not just victims of domestic violence, to explore safe and affordable housing options. That comes with, if an individual is eligible, with financial support for rental and relocation assistance, as well as an addressed confidentiality program. Oftentimes, we get asked in talking about are the services that we do have, well, what is next for Women Aware? So, Middlesex County has a tremendous breadth and depth of services for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. The challenge and the barrier for survivors is that these services are scattered all over the county. So, the Middlesex County Family Justice Center will house these resources in one centralized location so that a survivor can come in and tell their story one time and be connected to the different services that they need to begin moving beyond abuse. The Family Justice Center model, which was developed by the Alliance for Hope International out of San Diego, has been proven to increase safety for victims and children, to reduce domestic violence homicides, and also to reduce recidivism among offenders. I am proud to say that the center is open at 100 Bayard Street. And in place right now are legal advocacy, our domestic violence response team programs, as well as Housing Navigation. And we also have space for our community partners to come in and provide onsite services to survivors. And it's just the beginning. We are, we are starting small, but thinking very big. So I'm just going to take about three minutes to share this video with you that will give you a little overview of this beautiful space, as well as a window into why Women Aware felt called to lead this initiative in Middlesex County.
It is beautiful when you walk in. When I walk in, I feel a sense of welcoming. I feel warm. I feel like this is a place that a victim is going to love. They're going to feel the connection with the workers, with the stabbing. They're going to really care about them. They're going to open the door and say, "I've been long here. You're going to help me." I am excited about this journey, and I'm really happy that we got into this point. There's a lot more to come. We realized we needed this program after there was a very tragic case that shook us all to the core. She was brutally assaulted. She was left her dead in her apartment. She was found three days later, rushed to the hospital. Severe brain damage. She's paraplegic. She can't talk. She can't walk. She wasn't believed. I think we always reflect on cases, and you come back to work and look for things that we can do better.
The need is so great in Middlesex County and everywhere to serve victims of domestic violence. We have the full support of our board. We have the full support of our community. And we decided to do this because we believe a couple of things. It's statistically proven that this model reduces deaths. The next thing is that it reduces recidivism. So many people will remain safe. And that is our ultimate goal. But everybody lives. The third reason that we decided to go with this model is that it is a coordinated community response. What does that mean? It means that Women Aware cannot solve these issues. We can't move people beyond abuse by ourselves. We need our partners, and our partners do need our expertise. And so it is my joy to be part of a program that's bigger than us. It's my joy to work side by side with people in the community that are as committed as we are to protect families, to protect children, to protect victims, and to hold perpetrators accountable. That's why we're doing this.
I see this family justice center thriving with many agencies coming together. Every service available or possible to help victims move beyond abuse is going to be under this one roof. And I am so excited.
To me, that's the beautiful thing about this. This is not just a beautiful space with beautiful walls and a playground. This is a message. It does take a village to move on from domestic violence. We're planting. We're creating the village. We're bringing everyone together.
We need all of us to come together and say, "We can do this better." And we believe that we can, and we can only do it better when we partner with each other. So it is my honor to stand alongside our community partners to help move families beyond abuse.
Because of the tragedy that Highland Park has suffered with the brutal murder of Yasmin Uyar, domestic violence is very much on everyone's mind. On behalf of the Women Aware team, I want to voice our gratitude to you and to Highland Park for your commitment to make sure that Yasmin's voice and the voices of survivors continue to be heard by getting information about the services that are available out into the community. The more good information we share, the greater the likelihood that victim survivors and the people who love them will know how and where to get the help that they need and want and deserve. So I thank you so much for, again, inviting us to be part of your meeting this evening, for your attention. And if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to try to answer them. And if I can't, I will make sure that I get the answers for you.
Okay, pretty powerful presentation, Susan. Thank you for everything that you and your organization does to help women and children in Middlesex County who've been victims of abuse. I know we've known each other for a while, and I, I really can't begin to tell our residents enough how important your organization is to our community and the greater Middlesex County area. So, my office is going to be working with Women Aware to continue getting the message out. And hopefully, we'll be able to fight this scourge together.
And we look forward to that, Mayor. Yeah, as Phyllis said, this, this is truly a community effort that is, is necessary to make things better for survivors and to get them the help they need, and also to educate the community and, you know, and, and to put an end to what is a public health and safety crisis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. Back to regular business. Let the record note that Council President Phil George has joined us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, I was in on the participant list till I realized that my picture wasn't up, so I had to re-log in. I just briefly, even before announcements, want to thank everybody for their well wishes after my recent surgery, and I'm glad to be back. If I have to blank out once in a while to stretch, it's because my brand-new titanium hip needs to stretch now and again. Thank you.
We're glad to see you here, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and work session meetings held June 1, 2021, as distributed?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Oh, see, unmute yourself.
I was looking for that button. Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Hey, we're going to go right into our council reports now. And as usual, I'm going to go in order of how my, you all appear on my screen. So, Councilwoman Tara Canavera, you are up first. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. August is National Family Fun Month. So let's take this opportunity to have some last-minute fun activities with our families before our children return to school in September. The Human Relations Commission is working on planning a map of accessibility of Highland Park so that people visiting Highland Park will know exactly where they can go to use restrooms, things like that, all our businesses that are accessible. The Human Relations Commission is hard at work planning events for the rest of the year and beyond. The Board of Health wants to remind you that while May, June, and July are usually considered the most active months for TICS, they are still an issue. And please check yourself, pets, and children for TICS after being outside. Housing Authority, again, would like residents to remember that you still have time to apply for the Middlesex County Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The Food Pantry is going to be distributing this Thursday and this Saturday. Thursday is going to be 9:00 AM to 10:45 PM. and this Saturday. Thursday is going to be 9:00 AM to 10:45 and 6:00 PM to 7:00 and Saturday, 9:30 to 10:30. Donations can be made on their Amazon wishlist. Highland Park Gives a Hoot Food Pantry is every Tuesday from 10 until 11. And donations can be made by bailing a check to Borough Hall with a memo that it's for Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Again, these programs have been serving over 300 families in Highland Park on a continuous basis since before the pandemic hit. The Mental Health Commission wants everyone to remember, if you're in a mental health crisis, please call either Rutgers Behavioral Health Hotline at 855-1, I'm sorry, 515-5700 or Rowden Bay Medical Center Hotline at 732-442-3794. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, Councilwoman Stephanie Kim Cho Han, you're up next.
Tonight, we will have first reading on the lease and loan ordinance for capital equipment and improvement and financing program. Projects include a street sweeper, police vehicle, pickup truck, and a hybrid. My report is very short, so August is National Black Business Month. Black business owners account for about 10% of US businesses and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses, according to the US Census Bureau. That amounts to approximately 2 million companies owned by African Americans. Support and encourage African-American-owned businesses in your community. Not just this month, every month. One of my favorite new black businesses in town is What the Cluck. If you haven't already, stop by, check them out. The cornbread is to die for, and that's my report.
That was a good plug. Thank you.
I love all our downtown businesses, but I have a hate line. I didn't want anyone to think I'm one-sided.
Okay, next up is Councilman Hirsch. Do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. And first, thank you so much to Susan Dykman and Women Aware for providing us with essential information on domestic violence and abuse. You've been here for us in the past. And I know that you're going to be here for the community now, going forward at this critically important time as our community heals. Just on a little bit with Matt Hirsch, I chair the Council's Arts and Recreation Committee. And so for recreation, the Recreation Department is up and running and they're doing a phenomenal job. They resumed limited senior programming outside in July. They take, programs take place outside on the patio area near the community center with its newly retractable awnings that have been installed earlier this year. And some of the programs include senior exercise and Tai Chi classes, talking journeys, walking group, current events discussion groups, fun with Yiddish classes, crafts and projects, painting class, haircuts, ice cream socials, and summer outdoor concerts that'll take place, that took place in July and will continue to take place in August, weather permitting. Resume bingo cards and mahjong. The programs have been really well received and well attended. Exercise classes are unlimited to 25 members per class, and they do have waiting lists. Members are happy to be able to participate and look forward when they can fully resume indoor programming. New programs starting this fall include Zumba Gold Art Classes. And that's all for that. The Department of Rec signed up over 100 residents to receive free vouchers to be used at the farmer's market for fresh produce. And the Food Pantry is currently providing vouchers to clients that use the HPCFP as well. The amount is $30 and it's free vouchers per resident. The Summer Camp is also doing very, very well this year. It's completed its musical theater camp and four weeks of day and sports camp. We've had roughly about a little over 100 campers each week. And this last week, we had a baseball camp followed by tennis camp. The, I'm just going to move ahead a little bit here. The Highland Park Arts Commission, led by its Chair John Marin, will take, will take part in the New Brunswick Heart Festival on August 15th. The festival celebrates all of the vibrant arts and history that New Brunswick and the region and the county have to offer, and will feature live music, craft making, and activities. And if you'll just indulge me, just going to, because I told them I would, I'm going to share this beautiful flyer. Save the date, Saturday, August 14th at 4:00 PM. And this, you'll notice that there is no location on this flyer, but I will tell you where it's going to be. It's at Monument Square in downtown Highland Park. And again, the Highland Park Arts Commission was an integral part of planning for this day. So thank you to them. Just close out here. Just a little bit more. The COVID-19 Testing Center has been, has continued to be busy throughout the pandemic. However, they have refined their hours. It is now Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. You can make an appointment using on the Borough website, www.hboro.com. But walk-ins are also available. Remember, you can enter your insurance information, but if you do not have insurance, the tests are free. And you usually get your results with, it's a PCR test, and you usually do get your results within 24 hours. So if you're looking for a quick turnaround, all you have to do is come down to the community center. I just wanted to just mention we lost in the last few months and actually very recently, we lost two members of our Highland Park Public Housing Community at the Croman Center. And Tara, I used to work with them, so I just wanted to mention Regis Methfin and Marlene Pearl Mutter. Both were really active in tenant organizing and advocating for tenant needs in, you know, in our public housing community. And their losses will be will be profound. Marlene, I'm sure many of you would know, if you don't know her by name, you definitely, you've definitely seen her around town in her signature short shorts and bandana. And she's always been, she was always very, very nice whenever she struck up conversations. And I think sent handwritten letters to many members of the Council to offering her advice and support. So we will remember them and we will carry them with us. And then just finally, I just wanted to congratulate Councilmember Matt Hale for making the list of the top 100 insider NJ policymakers. We are in esteemed company and we look forward to all learning from you. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. All right, for some reason, you switched around on my screen. So I think Councilwoman Foster, I think you're up next. Thank you, Mayor. Happy summer, everyone. Tonight would have been National Night Out, but because of the pandemic, we did not get enough, by the time the restrictions were lifted, we didn't have enough time to prepare. It was only two months. We didn't have enough time to prepare, and I guess it kind of worked out well because we see that the new variant is here and the Delta variant is here and it's upticking. So it's a good thing that we're not doing a National Night Out because we don't want anyone getting sick. But hopefully next year, we'll be back with National Night Out and we'll have enough time to plan. It could be a fun time by all. In July, we celebrated our Highland Park Youth Academy with the Police Department. And they had such fun things as helicopter that came in one day and they got to see that wonderful display. They had the New Brunswick K-9 unit that came out. They did a whole CIS crime scene investigation. They had exhibits from the Bobs, the Bomb Squad unit that came out. They also had drones that came by that flew over and they get to learn more about drones. And they also learned very important lessons such as hate and bias presentation that was done, what is a hate crime, what is bias? So they learned quite a bit. Robert Wood Johnson. They had a closing ceremony after everything was said and done. And it was a very rigorous program that they went through, but all in all, they enjoyed the program. They enjoyed, after the program, there was a graduation and ended with an ice cream social. I personally would like to thank Officer Amera, who led the program and ran it to the week that they had it, and all of the officers that participated in making the 18 participants see another side of what the Police Department looks like, what good policing should be and what good policing can be. So that was awesome that we had an opportunity to share this program with our youth here in Highland Park. And hopefully next year, we'll have a much more robust program and we'll get more people to come out and participate. I had mentioned a while back that we're looking to do an adult academy. The chief is working on that and he will continue to work on that. Chief Abrams is working on that. And as, when we have enough data available, we'll be presenting something to anyone who is interested to see what it's like from their eyes, being in the car and see what they look like and that kind of thing. What, you know, what, what, what do they look for when they go out in the stop? What do they look like? What do they look at when they're driving through neighborhoods, that kind of thing? So that, that should be coming soon and soon as we have that available, we'll advertise. And let's see how many people who want to be a part of this and learn more about the day-to-day of what the police officers do. With that said, safety is, continues to be a huge part of what we do. And I'm encouraging young people on your scooters, on your bike, please wear your helmets. As you go about your day-to-day, it's summer, you want to do, you want to have fun, you want to do a lot of stuff. But remember, safety comes first. Wear your helmet. And whenever you're going to places, any kind of business places, please, 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 wear your face mask. The variant is on an uptick, and I just think it's for all of us to be safe. It's very important that we take measures into securing each and every one of us. If I take care myself, I'm taking care of you. So we are our brothers and sisters keepers in this case. So we really need to do what we have to do to keep everyone safe. Our Fire Department, under the new leadership of Marty, we have been doing some really fantastic stuff. We have three new volunteers that can, that join the ranks. And you'll be hearing their names being called out this evening. The mayor will appoint them. So we have three new firefighters that will be joining the volunteer ranks. And we're also looking for part-time and full-time firefighters. We have positions open. Please take a look at the HB website. And if you're interested, fill out an application and let us know. The Highland Park Fire Department also, you may have seen throughout town, the fire hydrants that were open and water is running. The reason why that was done is to flush the fire hydrants and to make sure that they're working properly. So if there should be a fire that they, the lines are not clogged and the water going through. So that's a part of their public safety that when you see those hydrants that are running, they're making sure that the lines are clear and they're doing their various testing to make sure that should there be an emergency, they can get the white stuff on the red stuff in appropriate time and we all can be safe. Another set of great news, Zone 16 Center, they have been busy, 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 busy. They have collaborated with Edison Job Corps and they have started a planting project. And that planting project is growing fruits and vegetables and various other crops. And the youth are learning about what kinds of fruit, fruits and vegetables they should be planting, how they grow. And most important, the nutritional components of what the fruits and vegetables that they'll grow, they're growing their own, they're eating their own and just making them live a cleaner eating habits and learning more about fruits that are healthy and good for them. This was, this was made possible by the help of the Department of Public Works. They helped to deliver the planters and the materials that they needed. So a big shout out to DPW for all the help to make this all happen. Coming soon is going to be the London Library. And in the London Library, it's going to be in this garden that they're putting together. And the garden in the London Library, they will, they'll be looking at stuff such as mind, body, and wellness. So it will be a wellness garden that will reflect on, a lot of mindfulness reflection can be done there and how they take care of their bodies while eating those good fruits and vegetables that they're planting, no less. They continue to do a lot of great stuff this week, this, this summer. They worked on comic book animations. So they have been busy with creating various types of animation for comic book. And this was made possible by a grant from Middlesex County. So they were very happy to receive the grant so they can work on comic, comic book animation. So way to go, Middlesex County helping us out here in Highland Park. Coming up real soon, on August 15th, Alpha Aviation will be coming, will be, registration will be open for anyone who's interested in learning more about aviation. August 15th, those, you can reach out to Ashton over at the Teen Center or over at Zone 6. And applications will be made available for anyone who's interested in learning more about aviation and being registered to participate in any of those classes that they're going to be offering. Back to school, Zone 6 is also busy working on getting supplies for back-to-school. Information to be followed. So be on the lookout for when they start doing their back-to-school supplies that they do, that they've been doing for the past couple of years. Wonderful, wonderful news, Zone 6, every week provides food, food distribution for 37 families. So that is just awesome that they are, there is such a resource that families who may be food deprived and don't have enough that they can go over to Zone 6 and provide, and they can be provided with nutritious meals. So thank you for all the youth that goes in every week and do the package and the planning and making sure that people who have food insecurities can find food over at Zone 6. So great work, all the teens, great work, Ashton and all the helpers that are over there making this all happen. Just want to thank everyone again and have a safe and wonderful summer. That's my report. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
I do, and I'll be as brief as I can, Mayor. Thank you very much. So I hope everybody's enjoying their summer, taking part in a lot of summer activities. We had a great one in Highland Park this, just a bit ago, the gazpacho contest by Main Street Highland Park at the farmer's market. It was, it was enormous success. We had a panel of illustrious judges, Sam Erskine from the Bridge and Chef Kayla Reed from the Superteer. And our own Matt Hirsch was a gazpacho judge. And, and he downed 17 or 18 different bowls of gazpacho. So the winners were, the gold medal winner was Alana Cohen with her Bloody Mary gazpacho. Silver medalist was Niles Bahat with his Green Goddess gazpacho. Bronze medalist was Gabby Aaron with the Young Nonas Summer Splendor gazpacho. So those recipes are going to be up on Main Street at some point very soon. But thank you to the judges. Thank you to everybody who participated in the great event at the farmer's market. As, as we've said before, please, please remember to shop in all of our businesses. The new ones, the old ones, all of them really can use your support. Remember that, that August is a month where we often go out of town. People go to the shore, people go different places, and that means a day that you're not shopping in Highland Park. So make up for it when you come back. So please make sure that, you know, August is a tough month. And as, as Councilwoman Foster mentioned, we are seeing some changes in COVID. And, and that can bring and may bring some restrictions. And I would please, as you are shopping, please remember that the shopkeepers and the owners are really just trying to do their best to keep everybody safe. So whatever the rules are, whatever the, they are, really, it's, it's, it's in all of our interests to try and abide by those and do our, do our best. So as you're shopping, you know, as, as the rules for COVID are in flux and may change, please remember, please shop in Highland Park. We have a number of things tonight that are on our agenda. I'll just mention briefly, there is a program called the Neighborhood Preservation Program. And ideally, the borough is going to be providing, applying for a grant from the state to help with economic development on Woodbridge Avenue. It's an area that we think there's a lot of potential to grow. It's an area that we think there's a lot of potential to, to grow. And this is a, a great starting point. It's a, it's a five-year grant. And if we're lucky enough to get it, it would provide some great seed money for, for doing some significant things up on Woodbridge Avenue. So we're, we're hoping to, to apply for that. We're also going to enter in a contract with V O Scooters. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Kim Cho Han for making sure that scooters were at the top of the agenda on most because we need scooters in, in Highland Park. It's going to be a great opportunity, a great place for people to be able to jump on a scooter and head to New Brunswick or ride around town. We passed some guidelines, as, as Councilwoman Foster said the other day about helmets and ages, and those are important. But we're, we're looking forward to this partnership with V O Scooters, which are the, the, the group that's working with Rutgers to bring scooters directly to Highland Park. We're also entering into an agreement with T H A Consulting on a parking management plan. It's part of our redevelopment, which we are also talking about tonight. And I'll end with that. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, the staff in particular, the professional staff, the Jim and Joe and Terry and Emma and Joan and Jenny for all the, the, the hard work that's gone into that. But also to thank everyone who has participated in the numerous meetings and, and, and public comments, the planning board and all of those. You know, as we've said before, this is an introduction of a redevelopment plan. There's a lot of work to do as we move forward. There's a lot of discussion that we will continue to have as, as we move forward. But I, I just, as we're at this inflection point, I wanted to make sure to say thank you to everybody for contributing to what I think is a very solid, good first step in a redevelopment plan. And so with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Council President George, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you very much. First, from Public Works Committee, we should know that starting in September, we'll be back to bulk trash removal by appointment. I spoke with the superintendent today and it will be starting off right in September. It'll be the managed the same way as in the spring. There'll be a contact number at Public Works Department. You can call in and book your appointment. They'll be running from September through October at this point in time. Also, there's a number of matters coming out of the Public Works Committee on for review tonight. The Renewable Government Energy Aggregation Ordinance sounds complicated, but if you recall, we enacted an ordinance a number of years ago, allowing us to participate in the sustainable energy market. We found one of the problems was that when we went out to, to bid to find a percentage of sustainable energy and it would work as we would buy from that energy provider given a certain percentage of sustainable energy, but if it did not beat what was received from your current energy provider, then the, the agreement would not go into place. It was found that if we amended that, there were a number of recommendations, especially in the hearings before Sustainable Highland Park, one of which was to make the ordinance read at least equal to your current energy provider rate, which may give us much more of a window for sustainable energy. That's on for amendment tonight. That's the amendment to that ordinance. In the water meter ordinance, we're broadening the five-eighths, which is the standard water meter line that comes into your house where your water meter attaches to one inch. Because number one, one inch is a more current contemporary installation. And number two, this will allow, as you'll see in other places, the water meter replacement program, which is part and parcel of a revamping of the infrastructure to take into account all these new meters and these would be borough owned and installed. They would be the latest contemporary electronic readings. So we have much more consistent results. And we had a number of units. The program would take a while to install, but we need to amend the ordinance first. Second, you'll notice that we have the yard waste agreement with M C I A. Yard waste is your bags full of leaves and grass clippings and so on. A number of years ago, we discussed alternatives to composting, but we found that NJDEP would require our little storage lot across from D, from DPW to be licensed as a compost storage. We have therefore found that the most economic way to process is to continue to do business with Middlesex County Improvement. Now, I just talked about the water meter amendment, but you'll also notice what, there's a resolution to reject the current bids for the water meter replacement program. We actually, it's a good thing. We actually found in the submissions of the two bidders that the proposals they came up with and the alternatives that they were presenting actually give us a much broader range if we were to revise our specs and go back out to bid. We get a much better project and a much more, I don't want to call them contemporary, but most current technology for the meter. So asking council to reject the current bids. So we could go out to bid again with the advice of the, you know, the technology that's been shown to us through the, through the bidding process. And finally, as part of our infrastructure program that we've discussed over the last five or six years, we know that one of the major projects we've been told for years and years and years is the water main connection up on Woodbridge Avenue. Now that the county is looking at the improvement project and we will be joining that, it makes sense. And we've tried to, you know, with the administration's vision with the P S E N G gas lines to coordinate our efforts to do any underground repairs or remediations prior to any kind of paving and re-curbing and so on. And there's a resolution on to retain our engineers to do the planning so that now that the Middlesex project is moving forward with us for the Woodbridge Avenue improvements to finally get to that big old water main on Woodbridge Avenue that we've known has been a problem for years and years and years. And other than that, Mayor, that's my report. Again, I thank everybody for the good wishes over the last couple of weeks. I'm glad to be back. And if I hear one more million, six million dollar ban joke, we all date ourselves by doing that, people. But I appreciate the good wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President George. All right, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So I do have a report. You know, I've been watching the developments here with in terms of COVID nineteen cases and vaccinations very closely. The total number of Highland Park positive cases to date is one thousand one hundred and thirty-one. And that's about eight percent of our population. While eighty-one percent of our total population aged eighteen plus has been vaccinated with at least one dose, there are demographic pockets in our community with, with much lower rates of vaccination ranging from five percent to eighteen percent. To address this issue, I'm thrilled to tell you that I'm appointing members to a new Mayor's Wellness Vaccination Action Campaign. This campaign will be chaired by Dr. Cliff Lacy. He's a distinguished professor of professional practice at Rutgers School of Communications and Information, Clinical Professor of Medicine at R W J Medical School, and a distinguished visiting professor at Rutgers Ernest Mario School of Pharmacy. His former administrative responsibilities, besides having served as Chair of my Mayor's Wellness Campaign since I've been mayor, are Commissioner of the Department of Health and Senior Services for the State of New Jersey, Chief Division of Cardiovascular Diseases and Hypertension at R W J Medical School, and President and CEO of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. You'll hear me appoint the following medical professionals to this group. Dr. Elliot Frank, a Core Professor of Medicine at Hackensack Meridian Health School of Medicine. Direct, he's the Medical Director for Patient Safety and Quality at Jersey Shore University Medical Center. And his former administrative responsibilities include Chief of Infectious Diseases at the Jersey Shore University Medical Center, Chair of the Department of Medicine at the Jersey Shore University Medical Center, President of the Infectious Diseases Society of New Jersey, and Clinical Professor of Medicine at the Department of Medicine, Rutgers, Robert Wood Johnson. Dr. Bruce Fisher, who is Clinical Professor of Medicine at R W J Medical School. Hospital, his hospital appointments include St. Peters University Hospital, Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital in New Brunswick, Jersey Shore University Medical Center, and he is the former Chief of Medical Education at Muhlenberg Regional Medical Center. I'm also appointing Dr. Patricia Whitley Williams. She is the Professor of Pediatrics. She is a Professor of Pediatrics and Chair of the Department of Pediatrics, Chief Division of Pediatric Allergy, Immunology and Infectious Diseases. She is the Associate Dean of Inclusion and Diversity at Rutgers R W J Medical School, President of the National Foundation for Infectious Diseases, National Medical Association Liaison to the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, and A C I P at the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention at the CDC. Dr. Karen Ebel Avery. She is a pediatrician in private practice with the Somerset Pediatric Group. Her hospital affiliations and appointments include R W J University Hospital in New Brunswick, R W J University Hospital in Somerset, St. Peters University Hospital, Morristown Medical Center, and pediatric and adolescents with a specialty in pediatric and adolescents COVID nineteen cases. The community members I am appointing to this group, you will hear later. Ashton Burrell, representing the N double A C P. Pastor Greg McLendon, who is a local pastor. Chris Woodward, representing the Board of Education. Hayden Hussain, representing the Highland Park Chinese Association. Norma Bo, representing the Board of Health. And Josh Przansky from The Rock of New Jersey. Our council liaison, liaison to this group is Tara Canavera. So we are taking this situation here very seriously. And I can't emphasize enough how important it is for all of our residents to get vaccinated in order for us to keep all our friends, neighbors and relatives safe from this virus, especially with schools starting in September. All right, it is now time for the first public discussion session. Total time allotted is twenty-one minutes, three-minute maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the evening. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes have lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is a thirty, when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes allotted or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button in the application. The Assistant to the Borough Administrator will announce your turn by calling out your name or the last three digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your full address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or raise, or the raise hand button now.
So first we have Daniel Stern Cardinal.
Okay, Daniel.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, two twenty-one Harper Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So first, I just want to follow up on what the mayor said. Everybody, if you're not vaccinated yet, please get vaccinated. We're, we're almost done with this thing. If everyone is vaccinated, that's the way we're going to end it. We're going to get a wave of vaccinations once kids between five and twelve get vaccinated probably in the next few months. And then hopefully within a few months after that, down to six months will be eligible. Until then, it's on all the adults and all the kids down to twelve that are eligible to protect immunocompromised and the younger children that can't yet get vaccinated. So if you're not yet vaccinated, please, please, please do that. Second thing is just with the redevelopment plan, I just want to thank all of you for all the work that's gone into this over the many, many months at this point. I won't go through all the reasons why I really like it. You've all heard that before. But I just want to say that I'm sure we're going to hear potentially that, you know, this has maybe been rushed or there hasn't been enough public input. And I mean, I remember way back, I think it was in twenty nineteen before the pandemic, where we all got together at the community center and for making little notes on, on sticky notes on maps, right? That was like over a year and a half ago at this point. So I mean, this has been a long process with a lot of public input. And I think at the end of the day, we've come up with some really nice frameworks to build on for, for the downtown. So thank you for all that work. I'm really excited to see this finally up for a vote in front of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Ms., anybody else?
Yep, we have Peter Spool next. I'm going to unmute him.
Hi, this is Peter Spool at one forty-six Graham Street in Highland Park. I want to thank the developers of the plan for making the updates in the latest version. I have several comments about the latest version of the redevelopment plan. First, I direct your attention to section three point one. If you look at page eighteen, there's an item seven about goals of redevelopment plan and the master plan. There were phrases in item seven such as enhance open spaces and create a downtown square. I would submit that this plan does exactly the opposite. It takes away a large existing public space and substitutes several smaller spaces that will be inadequate for large events that have taken place in the past, including the farmer's market. I believe that maintaining a larger public space is necessary and is required by the plan. Referring also to the description of track C, there is some text description of the proposed public spaces that would accompany any building there. I would ask that an overhead bird's eye view drawing of what the buildings and the public spaces would look like would be very helpful to us, the public, to understand what this would really look like and how big those public spaces would be. I think that's important. Lastly, I want to talk about the tactic and the strategy for this redevelopment, this current redevelopment. The entire approach of infill redevelopment is inherently a short-term tactic. And the proposed parking deck, because of the limited amount of onsite parking, is sized to the projected total number of housing units in the four infill tracks included in the current redevelopment plan. I would note that this kind of short-term thinking and planning often results in negative, unexpected consequences in the future.
Thirty seconds.
I would humbly ask, and this is my question, how can the provoke, the proposed parking deck be adequate in the longer term when more infill development takes place in the future? The plan needs to include long-term thinking on options for parking. An obvious way is to An obvious way is to require onsite parking for each project. Can you please answer my question in the longer term?
I'm.
How will this work?
Thank you, Peter.
Please answer the question.
You didn't give me a chance to finish talking, Peter.
Thank you.
So as I was going to say, you, you heard Councilman Hale, I believe it was, talk about a parking study which is going to occur that will help guide us in terms of the number of spaces and parking situations that are needed here in Highland Park with and without this development. Councilman Hale, did you want to add to that?
No, I think that the parking consultants and the parking management addition to our redevelopment team certainly looks at, at, at short-term, medium-term, and long-term and sees, and we're going to attempt to find a best solution for all of this.
Thank you. Okay, Emma, is there anybody else?
Yes, there's Carl Prey, who I'm allowing to talk.
Okay, is this Carl or Mary? Hello?
Can you unmute yourself? All right. All right, they have, oh, there we go.
Hello?
Mary, hi. Could you please state your name and address?
Mary Forsberg, 317 Dennison Street. I have, I have two major issues to discuss, and I'm going to try to do it fast. I will send you copies of what I am saying tonight because I would like responses to them. The first thing I want to talk about is bonds. The second thing I want to talk about is the parking management plan. In the 119-page agenda that you are looking at tonight, there's a resolution to approve a combination of general improvement and water sewer utility bonds. Approximately 40 pages of legalese, legalese just addresses more than $14 million in bonds the borough plans to issue in 2021. 5.8 million in federally taxable government general improvement bonds were included with no details that of how that money will be spent. I understand that of the 5.8 million in bonds, just under 2 million was intended to be used to purchase Buckwoods, which obviously didn't happen. That money was repurposed, so it could be used for environmental remediation, and whether that has happened or not is very unclear. Earlier this year, I formally requested and received an accounting of property the borough has purchased since Mayor Mittler and this council were elected in 2015. Since 2015, the borough has purchased five properties at a cost of approximately $1.7 million. This includes $200,000 for the 12th teen center in 2015, 317 for Bergen Auto, 660,000 for two properties now included in track C, and 625,000 for the gun and boat shop now part of track A, although I guess that is still up in question, the 625,000. I see you plan to go into executive session tonight to discuss property acquisition, acquisition negotiations. And that tract A in what you're presenting includes lots, one includes lots 49, 41 through 49, which include Ubrees and Classic Cleaners. Does that mean that you are going to, you plan to purchase Ubrees and Classic Cleaners, whether they are interested in selling or not? The $5.8 million is a mystery, and I'd like to know how you plan to spend it since there will be virtually no oversight of the expenditures. And what assurance do we have as taxpayers that you will spend our money wisely? The second thing I want to discuss is the parking management plan. Also included is an award of $35,000.
30 seconds.
THA Consulting, formerly Tim Hoss. This is an organization that you've been talking to, I believe, since March 2020. And LRK was supposed to have done a lot of what this is going to do. Tim Hoss, THA Consulting, built parking garages. They design them, they build them, they do not do studies of what kind of parking a town needs. I'll be sending you this, this, and I would really like a response to it because I think that, including Tim Hoss, which builds parking garages, is not exactly the people that the people in Highland Park really want to look at this situation. We're interested in pedestrian safety, we're interested in traffic.
Thank you, Mary. We'll, we'll look forward to getting your email.
I'm sure you will.
Okay, is there another hand, Emma?
One more individual, Jason Pastelneck.
Good evening, everyone. That's Jason Pastelneck, 606 Abbott Street. Just really briefly, I just wanted to echo the comments made at the very beginning that, again, I applaud all efforts to increase the vaccination rate in town. I think that is extremely important, would go a long way to saving lives. And secondly, I just wanted to voice support for the development plan. I think it would add a great deal of vibrancy to our downtown. I look forward to, it's been talked about for, I think, all over a decade or longer, and I look forward to actually seeing some of it come to fruition. If we could get even just half of what's going on, but touch in, I think that would make a lot of people in town very happy. That was all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jason. All right, then, Emma, I assume there are no other hands?
No more hands.
Okay. We're going to move on to the ordinances that we will be voting on on second reading next. First, Clerk, can you please report on advertising the electric scooter ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance licensing electric scooters and amending the code of the borough of Highland Park by adding Article 5 to Chapter 247 of said code was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of the publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any public hearing on this? Please raise your hand if you want to comment. Emma, is there anything?
Yes, there's one individual, David Copperman, who I'll allow to talk.
Okay. David, you want to comment on the scooter ordinance?
You'll have to unmute yourself.
Now, one more time.
Oh, okay, got it. Right, please state your name and address.
We were muting and unmuting mutually. David Copperman, 120 Hill Street, I have a question on a safety concern. If I read the ordinance right, it says that you don't have to wear a helmet on a scooter if you're, I forget, under, over the age of 17. But you have to ride in the street. You cannot ride on the sidewalk. You have to ride in the street. So bicyclists and motorcyclists who ride in traffic under law have to wear helmets. Somehow scooters don't, and I'm just, I just wonder about general information and understanding of all this. Is it clear to you all what the law is and why it would be the case that if you're in traffic on a, you know, concentrated area of Raritan Avenue, a state route, you could be, you have to be in traffic if you're on a scooter, but you don't have to wear a helmet.
So I'm going to ask which council person had this in their bucket? Okay, Elsie, Councilwoman Foster, do you want to address that?
Although the ordinance didn't state that you have to wear a helmet, it is strongly advisable that you're going to be riding a motorcycle, a bike, or anything. It's the law that you wear a helmet, so this also applies that a helmet should be worn when riding.
It's, it's.
Everyone should wear a helmet.
Right, so it's advisable, but it's not required.
I think we need to take a second look at that ordinance to make sure that our language is firmed up. We've got to take a look at what the state, what the state regs are to make sure that we're in compliance. And even if the state says we should not, it doesn't, it doesn't state that a helmet should be worn, it's strongly advisable that you're going to be outside riding a device. You should wear a helmet. And if it's not there, I think I want to take a closer look at that with some of the people who.
Attorney Schmier, are you, are you familiar with state laws and how they relate to this ordinance?
Well, the, the reference in the ordinance to folks under 17 tracks Title 39. There's a reference to Title 394010-1. We can check it, as the councilwoman indicated, to make sure that there are other regulations which would also require or strongly recommend that a helmet be worn for folks over 17 years of age. But I do know that we tracked the state law here, so I know that part of it is correct. We could check the rest of it.
To answer your question, it appears that this ordinance is following state law. But I'm going to ask, as, I'm going to ask the council for a vote on this. However, if anyone feels uncomfortable and wants to change it despite the state law, can do that, okay?
I would ask also that you, that you look into matters of turning and signage, particularly again on Raritan Avenue. It's, it's, it's very unclear to me how scooter traffic is supposed to be managed in, in the general flow of vehicles. And I, obviously, this is not of your construction, but I find the way the law is constructed concerning. So I would suggest that you look into this, particularly as we move with the notion of far greater congestion in the central business district. How are we going to accommodate all that cross-traffic?
And one of the things that we could clearly do as a safety measure is not permit e-scooters on Raritan Avenue. Certainly look into having the e-scooter traffic diverted to either Magnolia Street or Dennison with parallel Raritan. Okay, so, thank you, David. I'm sorry. Hang on one second, Elsie. There's a background noise. It's making it hard to hear the conversation here. Okay, that's better. Elsie, did you want to comment?
Yes, I would say, I would like to say that we'll take a look at, as it pertains to riding scooter on Raritan Avenue or whatever avenue that, that may be proposed. We'll take a look at that in public safety and get back to everyone as, as we will be taking a look at the state law and how it should or should not have protective helmet when people are riding motorcycles. I think it's an important part, and we'll take a look at that and get back to you.
Okay, so then I'm going to close the public hearing on this and ask for a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title.
Can I ask a question of, of rules of order, I guess? Is, aren't we voting to table the motion?
I need a, I need a, I need a motion to either table, adopt, or reject it. So. Right.
So it sounds that Councilwoman Foster, forgive me if I'm missing it, but you would like the Public Safety Committee to look at this again. And as a result, I'd like, if that's true, then we should make a motion to table this rather than adopt or reject.
The state, the state is silent on helmets. However, we have to take another look at it so we can come back and do an amendment. If we can get the state to have something across the, with this new, make an amendment to include helmets. Because it's a public safety matter, so anyone riding a motorbike or a bicycle is required to wear a helmet. This should be required of wearing a helmet also.
Just over 17, no, just, just under 17 for bicycles.
Okay, so, so it's.
In the interim.
It sounds like there's a lot of confusion. I don't know what was discussed at the Public Safety Committee regarding this. So, so I think, yeah, it doesn't make sense for us to vote on this the way it is until the Public Safety Committee has a chance to meet again and address the state issues versus any local ordinances that you would want to update. So that being said, can I have a motion to table this till the Public Safety Committee readdresses it?
I'll move.
Second.
But why are we tabling? We have the VO contract on there. We're following state laws. We can make an amendment later because we can have scooter, this, we're going to execute this contract tonight. We can have scooters next week, and we don't have any safety guidelines in, in place.
Right, I, I was in, I think we have to pull out the VO contract then.
Yeah, I, I mean, it sounds to me like the Public Safety Committee wants to readdress this. If that's what I'm interpreting Councilwoman Foster saying.
Let me be clear, that is not what I'm saying. I am saying that the state is silent on a helmet provision. There is nothing, the state did not say anything on that. If we're going to go back in and try to convince the state or try to supersede the state law, because we will pass an ordinance in town saying that you have to wear a helmet. Somebody will come back and say the state didn't say that.
Okay, so.
And when it goes, can I, can I finish, please? And when this goes back to the state, what is going to happen is we're going to look another six months down the road for them to make any kind of adjustment or changes.
Borough Attorney Schmier, just one second, Phil. Can we, could we? This is on second reading. I'm sorry it didn't come up on first reading. But can we vote on something now? And then make an adjustment? Is that what you're talking about, Elsie?
Correct.
Okay, make an adjustment if necessary after reviewing the state law versus any local safety amendments.
And Madam Mayor, I, I think that would be the prudent way to proceed. As indicated, we have the VO contract, and they may be in town soon, as soon as the college opens. And I think the quickest way would be for us to look at the state law, to advise the Public Safety Committee. If you adopt the ordinance this evening, we could have an amendment ready to go in two weeks, and we can get it done. But I think at least you'd have something on the books, and then we can make an adjustment if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Council President Phil George.
Just very briefly, Your Honor, I listened very carefully to what Councilwoman Kim Cho Han has. She's worked hard on this. She's an advocate for e-scooters, and we've got the VO Ride contract. As part and parcel of this, as you know, I've been pushing electric vehicles. We need to move forward with e-vehicles based upon what Councilwoman Schmier is saying in the clarification by Councilwoman Foster. I'm going to withdraw my motion to table. And I'm going to move to adopt on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
I will be doing my best to make sure whatever provisions that, that can be changed and will be changed will make that happen as it pertains to protective helmets when people are riding their bikes. Yes.
Councilwoman George.
I'd like to see council also move our other electric vehicle and zoning regulations related to electric vehicles forward with the same dispatch, and I vote absolutely yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes, as is, and I can't believe this is coming up at the last minute and that we're even having this discussion. I can't believe we're having this discussion. This has been vetted extensively. And like, to have one person comment questioning the state law, helmets are required for minors under 17 on cyclists, and this reflects that. It's indisputable, so if we want to make changes in the moving forward, that's fine. But this is just, you know, this is, this is a good thing that we're making look bad.
Did you vote yes?
Yes, as it is.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes, and I know someone had comments before about what if someone gets hurt, someone on the sidewalk. This was put into place so that won't happen, because e-scooters has already been around for a few years, and everyone has been riding on the sidewalks, including me, with the helmet, without a proper light, without registering my scooter. So one of the great things that Public Safety put in here, because I read it, we can, everyone, you know, like Bird, Scooter, all these high-end brands, they have scooters with shocks that run you almost a thousand dollars. You can now register it with the police department if it's stolen. It's, it's some really good things in there. They have measurement for lighting that we should put on our scooters as well. And some really good details outside of the one comment. So thank you, Public Safety, so yes.
Okay, is that the last vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Clerk, can you please report on advertising the ordinance to terminate and vacate a drainage easement for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, terminating and vacating a drainage easement on Block two thousand one, formerly Block seventy-five, Lot fifteen point oh two, on the Highland Park tax map, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Roll call, please. Oh, public hearing, anybody have any comments or questions regarding the ordinance to terminate and vacate a drainage easement?
Yes, Carl Prey.
Yeah, this is, this is actually Carl Prey this time. Excuse me, and the, the question is, where is this, this property that you're talking about, and, and who owns it?
I'm going to ask either Councilman George or Borough Attorney Schmier to translate the lot and block numbers into streets for us?
If I may, Mayor, I, I'm trying to pull it up in front of me, but I think, again, it's still just by lot and block. But I believe this is a part of the development that was approved last year for Polo's development down at the very end past South Adelaide. I'm not sure exactly of the street address there, but the drainage easement is part of the overall planning that's been there for quite some time with regard to the Middlesex County Utility Authority lines that run through that area. I believe that the termination of the, and I would stand corrected by Borough Attorney Schmier, but I believe that the termination of this particular drainage easement is related not only to access, but to part of the, the borough's environmental accessibility as well.
Madam Mayor, the Council President's correct, and I apologize, I don't know the address either. But this is the, basically vacated and easement. It'll be replaced by another easement when and necessary down near the environment, as the Council President indicated. So it's really just removing one that kind of bisects the property. Now that the property is being developed, it's being relocated, so it'll work better.
Okay, so then I assume this is near the end of South Adelaide Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Eleven Way.
Who's gonna pay for it?
Okay, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to ordinances requiring a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of the lease ordinance for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the MCIA for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease and agreement with the MCIA relating to the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds. Series two thousand twenty-one of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Don't move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
All right, Clerk, could you please report on the introduction of the loan ordinance for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the MCIA for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Loan ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a loan and security agreement with the MCIA for the undertaking of various two thousand twenty-one capital improvements and the acquisition and installation of various equipment with an estimated cost of two hundred and fifteen thousand. Cost of such improvements and equipment to be financed through the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds. Series two thousand twenty-one of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the motion? And advertise the ordinance?
Don't move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
As mentioned earlier in my report, this is for that brand-new street sweeper. We get about ten years out of it, so yes.
Okay. Before we go into the introduction of the downtown development plan, as was mentioned before by one of our resident speakers and by Councilman Hale and myself, this redevelopment plan has been in, in the discussion stages. Well, actually, it all started many administrations ago. But this plan, as we're familiar with it now, we really got down to it after the master plan public discussions, and then it's just about a year now that we've been talking about it. At this point, I'd like to call on our professionals, Jim Constantine and our attorney, Joe Baumann. Jim, if you could, please summarize the updates for us.
Sure, may I share my screen, please?
Yes.
Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Slide, okay. Good evening. First, before I jump in, I didn't know if Mr. Baumann had any introductory remarks that he wanted to make.
No, Jim, I'm okay, I think if you can go through.
Okay, sure, and I'm gonna be fairly quick. But just to maybe provide some highlights and overview, this particular plan has been almost one year in process of creating. The council authorized us to move forward on September first of last year. It is, the initial study began in the fall and continued into stakeholder meetings that we had, three of those that were for the different areas within the plan. There's four tracks that are involved, A, B, C, and D. That occurred in October. In November, we were a redevelopment entity with the first presentation, and then really spent the next four months on refissons and refinements from December through March. And then a draft plan was issued in April, again presented at the redevelopment entity, referred to the planning board, who looked at it in May, June, and July. So there has been a lot of process and a lot of public steps along the way. Just to make sure that I'm able to enhance this, okay. So this is a view looking up Raritan Avenue. And again, the master plan in two thousand nineteen talked about custom tailoring, infill, and redevelopment, because of all the different size sites we have in Highland Park. In doing, creating a resident base to expand our downtown customer base for business purposes and to also establish a public gathering space as another overarching goal. And the planning board looked at this with regards to the tracks A and B that you see in the foreground here. They had no recommendations, and felt that those were consistent with the master plan. With regard to track D, which was at the far end of the site, and I'll show you in a second, they basically had recommendations to remove the North Third Avenue Plaza for the street to remain open, North Third Avenue. It is right now in the revised, in the final plan that you have for you tonight to introduce. They recommended maintaining housing as proposed on Dennison Street along the side of the parking structure as a buffer, that's always been in the plan, and that the new parking facility, the centralized, shared, common parking facility would be for residences and other needs as determined by the borough. So again, North Third, the top photo, will remain open. And one of the things the planning board discussed was really exploring further South Third for programming and possibly even the relocation of the farmer's market. However, South Third is not in the plan, it was not part of track D. Which brings us to the last two, track C, and to talk about the recommendations there. The yellow line that you see is the thousand-foot, less than a five-minute walk from this multi-level parking structure. And the centralized parking facility, as recommended in the, in the plan, really allows untapping the potential for redevelopment on a series of sites located within a five-minute walk, which includes tracks A, B, C, as well as the remainder of track D, which is much closer. And the parking structure at this centralized location is intended to, to really attract younger and empty nester households that are less water-oriented and desire to live, walk, work, learn, shop lifestyle. We look at the recommendations for track C, which is the site where the farmer's market is today, and these come from the planning board. One was to provide a multi-use public plaza along Raritan Avenue unless, until another location is devoted for such use. If the farmer's market is to relocate, find a viable location for that, allowing more than one building on the site, and then to have a parking analysis for the existing and proposed uses on and surrounding track C. And as indicated earlier by Councilman Hale, the borough is in the process of engaging parking consultant, and that will be part of the scope. The last bullet actually was not a recommendation from the planning board that we incorporated. It's just a straight bullet. In terms of what the plan does, it really enhances the, the uses for these particular tracks downtown, expands the permitted uses from the existing zoning and what's in the redevelopment plan. That is a recommendation from the two thousand nineteen master plan. It also adds clarification on the parking structure as a use in this final plan. It's a use that's currently permitted in the existing CBD and PO zones. There's design standards for the parking structure in our existing zoning, and the redevelopment plan envisions it and has design standards for it. So it's, it's really nothing new. We've added a little refinement and carried all those design standards into this plan. Increase, it increases in terms of bulk standard, some of the front and side yard setbacks from what exists under zoning and in the current redevelopment plan. And it also reduces building coverage and requirements in some locations from, again, what's in the existing zoning and the redevelopment plan. So the plan really allows for this custom tailor standards, again, a recommendation from the two thousand nineteen master plan. And then lastly, it adds new building, green building, and sustainable design standards as well as accessibility and universal design standards. Because obviously, there's opportunities to live here in a different way that's greener, more sustainable, and has accessibility and universal adaptability, wonderful for aging in place and for certain populations that need that support in the places they live. And then just a couple of other points. Again, it was recommended by the planning board back in May that we look at incorporating recommendations of bicycle and pedestrian plan. Most of these were in the plan already, but we've highlighted that we're ensuring that new development includes appropriate bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, including some recommendations that we added for traffic coming in this final plan. It leverages private development as a way to advance streetscape improvements, filling in sidewalk gaps, particularly along Raritan Avenue that's been called for for twenty years in our planning efforts, repairing existing sidewalks, modifying and eliminating driveway access, again, along Raritan, which has the ability to increase bicycle and pedestrian safety. And then, of course, all sorts of pedestrian bicycle roadway improvements at intersections and along some of the side streets where appropriate. And it also establishes parking design standards for covered bicycle parking and incorporates that into the plan, which doesn't exist outside of that. And then lastly, we, we've had a whole series of changes throughout this process based on community feedback. There's phase, phase development flexibilities that individual discrete projects can move forward on some of the tracks ahead of others. We don't need it all to happen once. There's a commitment to exploring a more permanent public space on South Third. It's ongoing. There's a limited onsite parking and/or reserved on-street short-term parking loading proposed in the plan as we've revised it through this process to accommodate potentially somebody who's parking off-site at the centralized parking facility but needs to drop off groceries or pick up a resident from the site that may need to have direct access to a vehicle. If the centralized parking is not built on track D, the plan does acknowledge that we could adjust density in the development program, explore alternate locations for a centralized parking facility, or not build a multi-level parking structure at all. So all of that flexibility is acknowledged, although we certainly have a, a plan that we'd like to try to work. And then there's also been a reduction in some of the height and controlling some of the views in the rear of track C. So then in conclusion, just to talk about the ongoing process and next steps, because this is a process, if we go to the bottom bullet, and these are the sections of the redevelopment plan that these eight point one refers to, this will supersede existing zoning. So the plan will become what's permitted. This has the result of increasing borough control, allowing us to put a toolbox, redevelopment toolbox in place, and then to have the process that I'll quickly go through on step six point two through seven point one, that we will not have under existing zoning. The first with this is the, the, just wanted to state that this is a redevelopment plan. This is allowing redevelopment projects to be explored and to move forward on the individual tracks A, B, C, and D. So the first thing is six point two, the Borough Council will be acting as the redevelopment entity. And there's things that you can do that we can't do under existing zoning. Six point three, you have the ability to select redevelopers for each of these sites. We can't do that under existing zoning. You can put in place a redevelopment agreement. You can put in place a redevelopment agreement that Mr. Baumann can go into, but has all sorts of control. And provisions that the borough would not have otherwise. And we do believe that this is and will be a living evolving document. So a six point five acknowledges and. Certainly say at this point, we believe that we will see amendments to this approved redevelopment plan as. Learn more as we place sites out to the development community as we get feedback. Which only meant to continue to evolve. We had to get started at some point. Seven point one allows concept plan review before anything is submitted. So these are all controls. And much greater control that the borough has. Seven point two, seven point three. If you if somebody were to proceed. Prior to the adoption of this plan under existing zoning, they would go right there to filing an application and going to the planning board for review. Those steps are still there, but all of the preceding steps that I outlined. Come only with the designation of the redevelopment plan superseding existence zoning. And then lastly. This really supports the goal of supporting a thriving downtown by leveraging reinvestment revitalization infill. And redevelopment to expand opportunities for mixed use redevelopment. I guess the mayor indicated something that's been a goal. Back for more than twenty years and certainly back to the two thousand five redevelopment plan. That's all I have to say in terms of the summary. Thank you. I'm going to stop sharing.
Hey. Thanks. Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Mr. Constantine is the borough's planner. I'm not sure, Mr. Baumann, our redevelopment attorney, do you have anything to add to this?
I really don't, Mayor. It's been a long journey and this is again just another step in the in the process and I think this document. Clearly has input from all corners of Highland Park and professionals and government body. So. I think we should be really proud of it and I certainly recommend it.
Okay, thank you. In that case. Clerk, can you please report on introduction of the downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through D? For consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Highland. Ordinance of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, authorizing the adoption of the downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through D. Pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA forty A colon twelve A dash one et sec. Has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise? The ordinance on first reading by title.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
A wholeheartedly yes. And again, I want to thank our professionals. I want to thank all of the council and all of the people who participated in this process. It's a great first step forward and I want to thank everybody for for moving it forward. A wholehearted yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and thank you, Councilman Hale, for your work on this. Thanks.
And I want to thank all of the council members who've inputted to this and helped us move it. This is step number one. Towards getting a plan done. Which is much needed for the health and the financial well-being of our community. For us, for our children and for our grandchildren. So thank you all and thank you to the residents. Who've given us so much input on this. Okay. Clerk, can you please report on introduction of the renewable government energy aggregation ordinance amendment? For consideration of passage on first reading by title.
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending chapter eighty-four. Establishment of a government energy aggregation program has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee. For consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
I would so move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd like to thank Tina Weishouse and the Sustainable Highland Park. Group for putting this together and working with the Borough Council to put this together and I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, clerk, could you please report on introduction of the water meter ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending chapter three twenty-eight concerning municipal water meters of the code of the Borough of Highland Park. Has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt the the following items? On the consent agenda fourteen A through fourteen N.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to appointments. I will be appointing William Winfrey to the Board of Adjustment. As I mentioned in my mayor's report, I'm appointing to the Mayor's Wellness. Vaccination Action Campaign. Dr. Patricia Whitley Williams, Dr. Elliot Frank, Dr. Karen Ebbel, Dr. Bruce Fisher. Ashton Burrell, Pastor Greg McLendon, Chris Woodward, Hayden Singh. Norma Bo and Josh Przansky. I am appointing to the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department. Eli Gang, Carl Stremlow, and Delaney McAvoy. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
I just want to make sure, Mayor, did you mention Cliff Lacy as well? I just want to make sure.
Already on the committee as the chair.
Thank you. I just I wasn't sure if he needed to be appointed, but I vote yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and I just want to congratulate the appointees, but I wanted to say hi to Eli Gang. As he's appointed to the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department. He recently got his EMT certification. I've known him since he was twelve years old, deliver it next door to him. He's an awesome, awesome guy and it's been great to see him kind of develop into this very community-minded, really responsible. Participant in Highland Park. So I think we're really lucky to have him there. Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're about to enter the second public participation session. Again, each speaker has three minutes but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty-second warning. And then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by nine P M. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad. Or select the raise hand button in the application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name and the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic. On or off the agenda, please press star nine or raise or the raise hand button now.
Mayor, first up, we have Carl Prey.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Dennison Street. I I'll I'll finish with my comments on the parking management plan. I want to start by saying that based on whatever what the what Jim Constantine had to say. The plan for for this redevelopment actually began in March two thousand twenty, not in September. Two thousand twenty in two in March two thousand twenty. That's when a a resolution went out to see. How many people were necessary on Raritan Avenue in order to fill a parking garage? So that's when you started planning for a parking garage. I've seen a lot of emails that were between. Borough council members, the mayor, municipal redevelopment officials, Nexus Parking Systems. Former mayor Paya Polos, the owner of track D, and I'm pretty sure that Tim Haas, T H A. Consulting was part of that discussion at the time. I'd like to know why the mayor and council are putting out an RFP for a parking consulting services when in March two thousand twenty, they paid Mr. Constantine. Nearly twenty thousand dollars to do the same parking analysis. That part that T H A consultant will do. And in in March, he was paid sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to plan for a parking structure. Based on population density needed to justify it. And he was also paid thirty two thousand thirty three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to develop a concept plan for feasibility study. Of the redevelopment plan that would include an economic analysis, financial and parking analysis. Why have none of why has none of this research been done? So now.
Or published.
Or or published. Why hasn't it been shared? I've seen emails and I know that there are parking studies out there that are redacted in every email that I've received. So I'd like to know why the mayor and council is hiring a hiring a company. Which specializes in building parking decks, in planning, designing, and engineering them. And whose whose website project list includes twenty-eight huge parking garages. Mostly mostly linked to transit facilities, universities, or hospitals. There is nothing on their website website that looks anything like Highland Park. And why is the lead project manager, someone who managed the New Brunswick Parking Authority for six years? Who is the Director of Real Estate and Economic Development for New Jersey Transit? And who is the Vice President of New Jersey Development Corporation? The resolution from the planning board to the mayor and council specifies that the parking study should include safety issues regarding park car parking. Traffic and pedestrian issues.
Thirty seconds.
I think it's fair to say that many people, even those who don't live across the street from this parking garage, oppose the construction of a centralized parking garage. They understand a parking garage is expensive to build and maintain, that no private developer will develop a garage. Without an infusion of public funds, taxpayer funds from us. That it will create traffic, environmental safety, and aesthetic issues. For the residential host neighborhood and that no formal studies have been done to justify this. I don't understand this at all and I think.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else with a raised hand out?
There is. Next is Mr. Castro.
Good evening. Marcos Castro, four three two Montgomery. I have a statement and a question. And the statement is that on the development plan. I've been listening to the presentations over the last year or so. And. I I hesitate. To be fully supportive of the plan. But I think it's based on the fact that I don't have a really, I struggle to visualize. How these the the structures will ultimately look like. My advice, whoever is working on the plan is to get some architectural firm. To get more true-to-life representations of what the structures will look like. And, you know, let us see what town will look like. At the end. Because, you know, what I see is just these aerial pictures with the squares. Over imposed on them. But I don't really have a good idea what any of these will look like. That's my statement.
Mr. Castro, I want to thank you for asking that question because I think it summarizes some confusion that people have. Between what this is in terms of a direction versus an actual. Redevelopment plan for a particular site. So I'm going to ask either our planner Jim Constantine or our redevelopment attorney Joe Baumann. To try to explain the difference between a plan such as this versus a site plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Castro, so this plan defines the bulk standards for a particular project. Like.
Joe, can you say what a bulk standard is?
Yeah, bulk standards like a zoning ones, things like height, density, use. Number of units setbacks, coverage, things like that. So. Things that you would find in a zoning ordinance. That's what the redevelopment plan does. It's the general rules for developing a project. The actual project itself doesn't exist today. We've just created the envelope. Within which the project could be constructed. The next step will be. Find a developer that's willing to build the projects we have in mind. For the property that we own, we'll go through a competitive process for the property and all others will have to work with others, the property owners themselves. But there'll be a point in time where we'll.
Thirty seconds.
With any luck, we'll have actual garage pictures, designs. And the public will be able to participate in that, but that's when we get to an actual project, which we're not at.
Thank you. I appreciate I appreciate the information. Quick question.
Thank you. Okay, any other?
Hold on, I think I did cut him off. Do you want me to bring him back?
Time is up.
Okay.
Okay, any other raised hands?
Yes, there is both they on.
Who, please state your name and address.
Yeah, Mary Botean, seven oh nine Madison. I wanted to first just quickly mention, Gail, I'm going to send you. An article from the National Institute of Health entitled Marijuana Use Is Associated With Intimate Partner Violence. I think Susan's presentation tonight extremely timely and this is important information for you to take a look at. Next, I just want to remind every council member that fifty residents from neighborhoods all over Highland Park. Made it very clear in their memo the end of June that they do not support attempts to bring in pot businesses. If by some chance any of you did not receive that memo, please let me know offline. Next, there are many towns throughout New Jersey, including Governor Murphy's hometown. That have opted out of participating in the pot industry. Some of these towns intend to stay out. Others are at least staying out for now in order to address resident concerns and wait for full regulations from the state. But Touchin is an example that is doing this. South Brunswick happens to be another Democratic Council that on July twenty seventh banned pot shops, distributors, and delivery services. Councilwoman Josephine Hockman says, I quote, "We are not saying no one is ever going to change their mind again, or there will never be anything." But what we're saying is that this has happened so quickly, we can't rush into it. As far as people going elsewhere to buy marijuana. It's not involving that much money that we're losing. It's not going to make much of a change to our budget. We're going to go the safe route. Now Edison, on the other hand, is opting in for now. But this is very important to note here. Pot businesses in Edison cannot be located a thousand feet, within a thousand feet from residential uses. Residential zoned properties within a thousand feet of licensed childcare facilities, elementary, medical, middle, or high schools. They cannot be located within a thousand feet of public parks or houses of worship. And it really is beyond comprehension that Highland Park Council members would even consider not having drug-free zones in their pot proposal. It really emphasizes some of the divisions in this town. For example, very few council members have children in our Highland Park schools. It would also appear that you would be unaffected by a lack of drug zones, also based on where you happen to live in Highland Park. So this may not be an issue for you, but it's for many other residents. That is not the case. Please remember, you need to look out for everyone in this town, especially Highland Park's children. Highland Park has a draft copy on hand, ready to go, from the New Jersey League of Municipalities of its Recommended Opt-Out Ordinance on Cannabis. If we can at least get that ordinance up in time for August 21, which is entirely possible, given additional meetings could be scheduled, as you've mentioned, Mayor, then let's do it. There is no requirement to opt in by 8:21. Let's get time, let's control controversy. Controversy, let everyone breathe a little bit more on this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Okay.
My, my, my six-year-old, 10-year-old, and 12-year-old might, might, might have something to say about us not having kids in the schools.
My 13-year-old, too.
Okay. Who is up next?
Next, we have a phone number ending in 8484.
Okay, please state your name and address.
It says that they're muted, and I'm not sure what the key combo is for unmuting yourself on Zoom. I may move to the next person and then I can recall on them.
Okay.
All right. Next is going to be Rachel Sotone.
Hi, how are you? I just want to second that drug-free zone. If you guys are so adamant about going through with this, we do have to think about the kids and having drug-free zones around the town.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah.
Okay, who is up next?
Next, we have Eric Silverman.
Eric?
Yes, I just unmuted. I first would like to commend Mary Boatian and everything, and her well-researched statement. I like to say I agree with everything she said. I am one who does not have kids in school. I do not have any kids at all, but I've lived in Highland Park since 1986, and I have found this to be a very friend, family-friendly community without drug shops, and I don't think that we should be making that change right now. People, yes, yes, the majority of people in Highland Park voted on it, but that they did not vote on having it located next door. They did not locate having it in a town of like about one or two square miles where it is impossible to go shopping without passing one of these stores, where it can't be relegated to something like what Boston used to call the Combat Zone, or New York's Times Square, where you can avoid these areas if you want. The way it would be done right now is that there would be no restrictions, and where, where they could be, they could be right near where everyone walks by, whether it be Stop &amp; Shop, Rite Aid, or any of the houses of worship or schools in this, in our borough, and I just don't think that these locations should be present in Highland Park. And even if, even if people want them, we shouldn't be rushing into it. We should be doing this. We should be at least opting out, if not opting out permanently, but at least opting out. I mean, I personally would not want them here at all, but I don't think we should be rushing into this. All right, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, we're going to try again with 8484. In order to unmute yourself, just press star six on your phone. Star six.
All right, we're, we're going to have to move on to the next.
All right, next up is Tatji.
I guess it's me.
Okay, please state your, yes, please state your name.
I'm not, I'm not Tatji. I'm Tatjana Gelf and 118 North Sheeps Avenue. I want to express my concerns also about the pot shops in Highland Park. I want to say that legalization of marijuana is not the same as inviting or allowing pot shops in the town. Like, tobacco is legal, legalization of marijuana was basically done not to put people in jail. These people rather need medical attention, or counseling, or like help, or a lot of issues, but putting them in jail was the wrong thing to do, so that's why it was legalized. But it's very different from allowing pot shops. Like, tobacco is legal, too, but it doesn't mean that we need to promote tobacco. It's not, it's known that it's not good for health, even though for many, many decades, tobacco industry was pushing that, you know, even doctors promoted smoking. So it, it is kind of, my concerns are the health because even with the medical marijuana, I heard from people on the forums that some really got much worse. So even, you know, so those who can, who want to order it, they can order it. It's, it's very different from, you know, building six shops. Then education, it's kind of known from people who, who smoke it that their attention and focus is not the same. So do we really want our children to not to be concentrated enough and decrease in their studies? And driving, I mean, as far as I heard, I'm not an expert in this topic, but there is no test, unlike alcohol, to check if people are on drugs. So all these concerns is basically public safety and my, and there are more issues. I really will not talk about this. I can send you an email with some links that I saw. So I suggest that you at least opt out for now until you become more aware-
Thirty seconds.
Understand better, and until the residents of Highland Park will become more aware and will be able to voice out their concerns and their opinion. It doesn't seem like all the residents know everything that will follow this decision. So I highly suggest to opt out at least for now, and I mean personally, I would opt out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Emma, do we have anyone else?
Yes, there's one more person. Danielle Stern-Cardnell.
Hi, everybody. Dan Stern-Cardnell, 221 Harper Street. I feel like I do this every time cannabis comes up, but I just want to correct the record on a few things here. First, bringing kids into it is completely irrelevant because none of the, the state-level laws, the local ordinances, nothing involves kids. It's for adult-use cannabis. So like, right now, kids have access through the black market. It's actually harder to get access once there is a legal market. That's just how these things work. So we should just keep that in mind. Second thing, all of this, this like reefer madness stuff, this is propaganda that goes back to the Nixon administration, and it's not like a conspiracy theory to say that. The people that came up with it have said that. There was an interview with John Ehrlichman, one of Nixon's top aides, who said, "We couldn't make it illegal to be either against the war, the Vietnam War, or black, but by getting the public to associate the hippies with marijuana and the blacks with heroin, we could then criminalize both heavily, we could disrupt those communities, we could arrest their leaders, raid their homes, break up their meetings, and vilify them night after night on the evening news. Did we know we were lying about the drugs? Of course we did. This has been made up from the start." But I do want to, just because I was Googling it as I'm sitting here listening on the, the domestic violence aspect of this, I found a study that looked at 24 states over 12 years as they decriminalized and legalized cannabis, so it's a big data set. And the top-line results are that you had a reduction in serious injuries resulting from domestic violence of 22.5% looking from before decriminalization, legalization to after. So to the extent there is an effect here at all, it is a decrease associated with legal, with, I should say, decriminalization of cannabis, because it goes back all the way to decriminalization. So again, if we're going to use, if we're going to like, consider things in terms of public policy, it should be data-driven. That's what the data show. Don't buy interferon-mongering. Follow what the data show. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, Emma, I'm assuming-
There's no more hands.
All right, then, normally, we would take a break now before going into work session, but because there's a very quick, only one item on the work session, I'd like to go into work session, then take our break, and go into executive session when I'm going to have to ask Emma to close this to the public. So, work session item. Public meetings, I just wanted to let the council know that prior to this upturn in COVID cases in Middlesex County and Highland Park, we were talking about reopening buildings and having in-person meetings coming September. I just want to let you all know that that is now on hold again. So that was the one item I wanted to make sure you were all aware of, and Terry and I will be watching the numbers closely with guidance from our Board of Health and my COVID task force. All right, and at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn from the regular and work session meeting and take a five-minute break before we go into executive session to discuss property acquisition and personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, see you all back here in five minutes, and Emma, you'll take care of shutting us down. Thank you, Jim, and for your time here. Joe, you have to hang up.
Mayor?
Yes.
I sent out an email during the meeting. My computer didn't update the Zoom app, so I'm unable to lock the webinar, so I did send around a new link for a separate meeting.
Okay.
So we are going to end this webinar where it is.
Okay, so Emma, just do me a favor. The only council people still sitting here are me and Matt Hale.
Yeah, I can't wait till people come back and let them know.
I'm here, too.
Oh, okay, and Phil, okay, you're all there. You're just-
I, I heard you say we were going to end this one, so just trying to figure out, well, where do we get the next one?
It's in your email.
Okay.
Okay, everybody, check your email. Emma sent us all a new link. Did you send it to Joe Baumann at Ed Schmier as well?
Sure did.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. See you guys soon.
Okay, bye-bye.